Good evening, everyone. I have six o'clock on the dot. We'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order in Council. I do not believe we have any remote electronic attendance this evening, so we start with board appointments. And the first thing I'm gonna do is just let you know that the appointment of Ty Lewis to Plan Commission will be moved to April. I was informed after the agenda was out that there's a job commitment transition being made, and so he's available to serve starting in April. So I will move forward from this point on to the mayor's appointment of Emily Freeman to the Cape Moline Beautiful Commission to fill the unexpired term of Greg Swanson to expire November 30th, 2023. And then the mayor's appointment of Jersey Rivers to the Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Planning, CACUP, to fill the unexpired term of Janet Zam to expire July 31st, 2025. Is there any public comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor Charlie.
Please come to the podium. You have three minutes.
This is about the reengineering of 12th Avenue. I hope some of you guys had a chance to actually drive by there and kind of see our concerns of what's happening here. If you take our parking away, when we have guests, they will literally have no place to park. But, because I'm right in the middle of the block, they're gonna have to walk maybe an eighth of a mile to just to be, just to be at our house. Imagine that. Imagine at Christmas, you've got your whole family coming. There's no place for them to park. They have to park, you know, basically a block away, carrying their goods or whatever. And I think that this, making a bike path in that area with as much traffic and as much... With, that area is already problematic. And adding more foot traffic and bike traffic to that is a recipe for disaster. I don't know what the perfect solution is to this. Maybe there's a compromise. Maybe we can park on half of the streets on the other side or our side. But I think it should be tabled until we at least understand, you know, or understand what's happening here. If you guys get a chance, drive on 12th Avenue. Drive around, look and see that we have no alley. We don't have a choice. Like, you might be able to have people parking back. We don't have that option. If your driveway's full, that's it. And for some people, it's only two cars. So they can basically have nobody over there. Everybody wants, you know, everybody wants bypass and this and that. 12th Avenue is not the place for it. There's other streets.
Thank you very much. And if there, is there any further public comment?
Joseph.
Okay, just a reminder to the public. The clerk reminded me to mention that the 12th Avenue item is not up for final vote tonight, just until everyone's clear. There's still another reading on it on the 21st. On the 21st. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, who's next?
I didn't know we were going right away.
Okay, you have three minutes.
I hope you all had a chance to read my letter I sent to you. And there's a copy of it. Also, pictures that we should have gave you last time and a signed petition from the neighbors in our neighborhood. Pass it around. Appreciate it. Part one out Sunday, so I had to redo it, rewrite it all. Ninth page in there, I added a picture of the map for neighborhoods. I identify all neighborhoods in Moline. And you can see 7th Street cuts right through Old Town. That's a minor arterial along with 36th. It cuts, I don't have the map in front of me, but it cuts through another neighborhood. Honestly, I've been trying to think of the optics of this one. And main optic is to move traffic through the city. So especially to relieve the avenue of the cities, which John Deere should do so, but as wide as that road is, the lights are horrible there. You can't get anywhere. So my biggest fear with 12th Avenue turning into this now that the parking's gone, what will stop the city in a few years or so? Going back to a four lane. Because then it'll definitely be up on our curb line. And they're already driving nuts. I mean, I've driven all over this country, driven in Canada, Europe. Hawaii's interesting. No matter what you do, you're not gonna change human nature. Honestly, I would like to see a bigger push far as educating people. I mean, we got road signs over 74, that big billboard. I mean, it puts up stupid messages, nothing. But that's it. And I know from driving with people, most of the time, the biggest problem is speeding on the road. And riding with people, I look over and go, hey, you know, it's 30 miles an hour. Oh, I'm doing, oh, yeah, they don't want you to spin around. You're not gonna get away from that, but I think a more, it would be nice, especially here, country as a whole, to educate people, to get down to realize, you're not the only person on this road. So, I mean, that's the main problem, that's 3D speeding. That's what I and everybody else in the neighborhood would like to get taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, chief? Okay, thank you very much. Questions on the agenda? We'll be moving 14.7, Council Bill 1045-2023, regarding the boost program to the non-consent agenda. Okay. Nothing else, we move to our Cow agenda items. 6.1, a resolution approving an amendment to the rules and regulations adopted by the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners here and after commission concerning Chapter 6, examinations for original appointment fire, Sections 1, 5A, B, and 8C, and amending ordinance number 3050-2022, the budget for fiscal year 2023 for the Fire Department by including additional training costs associated with the amendments to the rules and regulation of the commission. Mr. Vitas?
I would defer to Chief Reaganweather.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Council. This was a suggestion made to the Board of Fire and Police Commission and made as an attempt to promote recruiting. So currently, our requirements to be hired as a Moline firefighter is to be an EMT basic. At that point, if they don't have their paramedic license, we would put them through paramedic school. We'll probably pay up to $5,000 towards that schooling and then send them to the Fire Academy. So our last two recruitment lists have not provided paramedics. I think maybe out of the last two, we've had two paramedics total, couple EMT basics, and probably three quarters, if not more, of the list are people who are just not qualified because they don't have an EMT license. So this was just my attempt at trying to get more qualified individuals hired, being that we are, we're gonna be short nine probably within eight weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderson Meyer. Any comments, questions? Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
Is this kind of a temporary measure till you get back up to?
It's permanent currently. We would have to go back to the Fire and Police Commission to have the language changed again, to go back to being a paramedic. I can tell you, and I hate going backwards, but 30 years ago, I believe there was probably no requirements. But that's when we had a list of, you know, 50, 60 people, and we were only hiring two. Currently, we're hiring so many and not getting the qualified individuals. I feel we need to go backwards and probably train our employees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 6.2, a resolution authorizing the Fire Deputy Chief of Emergency Medical Services, EMS, to execute a pro-care proposal between the City of Moline Fire Department and Stryker related to the onsite preventative maintenance of current EMS equipment and amending ordinance number 3050-2022, the budget for the fiscal year 2023 for the Fire Department by including additional costs associated with the pro-care six-year agreement.
All right, I'm gonna invite Deputy Chief Noid up here. He's Deputy Chief of EMS in a project he's been working on for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, Alderman, Council. So what we're doing here is, ever since I've been Deputy Chief of EMS, five years now, we've purchased equipment. We purchased three cardiac monitors. We get a two-year or three-year contract with that. Then we go out, we buy a Lucas chest compression machine. We get a two, three-year contract with that. We go out and we purchase a Stryker self-loading cot, and we get a two, three-year contract with that. You can see where I'm going with this. Eventually, we've got over half a dozen contracts out there, and they're requiring payments at different times, or ending at different times, or different fees. And so the whole goal for the past five years is to get everything onto one contract. So recently, we were just able to do that. We got actually a dozen of our items, being monitors, cots, and one Lucas device, which is our chest compression device, all onto one contract. We were unable to get the three original monitors onto the contract and the original Lucas because they're too old, and they have older equipment, so they would only give us annual contracts on those. So what happened is the $19,000 for the six-year, 19 annual, $19,000 for the annual payment ate up my budget for the contracts. And that additional $8,000 for the older three monitors and the Lucas device is what's putting me over. So that's why I'm here asking for the additional $10,500. Hopefully, in six years, hopefully, I won't be here, but the next person that has my spot will be able to, they can have a better handle on the service contracts. And it just makes it a lot more efficient. This price is locked in. It won't change. We get a good price for six years, and we know what we got.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderson Meyer, seconded by Alderson Went. Yes, Mr. Went.
Is there anything that, you know, when we had multiple people, like, were they affiliated with this particular product and this manufacturer? And then this one, I mean, does this lock us into now buying from a particular vendor in the future for those things? Or how does that?
So it will lock us in Alderman, Went for six years because that is the kind we have. But it's always been the brand we've used.
Okay.
Stryker's always been the brand we use. And actually, Stryker bought LifePack, who is the monitor that we use. So that was a merger of both of those.
Okay.
When I was here about four years ago.
Yeah, because I remember, because I was like, I knew we did Stryker because I think you guys showed like the Lyft thing and that. But that was the other name that I couldn't remember. But, okay, but if they're the same company now, then it was a different.
They're the same company.
Okay, anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 6.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an intergovernmental fire protection agreement between the City of Moline and the South Moline Township Fire Protection District for the purpose of providing fire protection and emergency ambulance services to the district commencing June 1, 2023 and ending on May 31st, 2024, and authorizing the City of Moline officers and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement. Yes, chief?
Okay, so a couple months ago, I submitted this as an informational, and I'm just back tonight to ask for approval. It's gone through both legal councils on both parties, and I think everybody agrees to the terms, so.
Motion to approve.
Oh, wait, we have another. Okay, motion to approve by Alderson Schmidt, seconded by Alderson Timian. Discussion?
I just want to take the time to compliment Chief Reaganweather. I know when we first met, right after he was appointed, we brought this issue up in one of our initial meetings. And I told him, I said, I'm gonna sit down with you, and we're gonna understand it. We're gonna sit down with them. They're gonna understand us. And then you're gonna take the ball, and you're gonna run with it. And I want to compliment him. He did a great job in working with the South Moline Fire Protection folks to bring us to where we are tonight. So my compliments to you and kudos for the great job you did.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Waldron?
Just for my own edification, since I'm not an attorney and don't read these things all that carefully. The definition of district are the folks that live down in that particular area. It is not entirely all South Moline residents.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Went.
I guess two questions. One, the 30% is that by statute? Is that limited by statute? Is that where that 30% comes from?
Three tenths of a percent.
Or three, yeah.
Yeah.
Answer is yes.
Yes.
So the other question is, it says in here that they will retain $10,000 for administrative. I mean, it seems that we're the ones that are doing the servicing and providing the, all that. Wouldn't that make, I mean, I'm assuming they're not giving $10,000 to cut a check to us of a calculation of three tenths? So I was hoping that that might be a scrivener's error, and actually, the extra $10,000 should come to us?
No, it's not. I think that $10,000 is for their attorney's fees throughout the year. They have no other source of revenue other than their EAV. So I believe that that $10,000 is just their administrative fees. But there's a little bit of confusion as well. They cannot pay the full three tenths of a percent this year based off of the truth and taxation issues that I brought up a couple months back. So that's why I believe that this is just a one-year contract, so that we can kind of reevaluate that at the end of this term.
Ms. Kostopoulos?
Right, so to further clarify, the .30% is what they get. And then they're paying that to us minus $10,000. But they have like pretend staff and other expenses. So that is what the $10,000 is for.
And it's my understanding their intention is to raise their tax levy over the next two, three years. They just can't raise it the full amount because of the truth and taxation. But it's definitely an issue that will be brought up again. I did ask originally for kind of a chart of the next three or four years on how much they could raise it, and I did not receive that.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Yeah, that's my concern. I mean, if we've got this here, which locks us in until May of next year, I mean, aren't we then gonna be like, oh, well, they didn't raise it this last year, so now they can't raise it till the next year? And, I mean, wouldn't it, I guess what I would like to see is rather us lay that out for the next few years. What does this look like? Because ultimately, this agreement as it stands is almost exactly what we've been getting, and we all agreed, was not them paying their fair share through the process. And so I'm hesitant to vote in favor of this as a one-year deal because, you know, a year from now, we're gonna be gone. There's gonna be new people in. And this is what happened last time, was it kind of got lost in the shuffle, and then nothing ever got.
So let me just double check. Ms. Alderson Went, you're suggesting that we add something to the agreement that includes a timeline of when they're introducing the information to their taxpayers to comply with what is needed to raise the funds?
Absolutely, because the way that it stands right now, they have every incentive in the world just to sit on their hands.
I understand.
And then next year, we have to renegotiate this thing.
Correct.
And by that time, they won't have raised it in November.
You're just asking for something to be clearly spelled out so we can hold them to the plan of increasing their funding so that they can pay us for these services. So that would require a motion to make a change, correct?
Well.
Or you can move to take it back, to take it back to the chief and have them create that and then bring it back.
Well, I'd like, I mean, it's not me making, I'd like to hear what other people say.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Before we make motions.
I have a sort of clarifying question. So in this, the district shall pay to the city the sum of $44,287,15. The same being .30% of the value of all taxable property less $10,000. I guess my concern is that, is that statement inaccurate in this agreement? Because I thought we said that they could not tax it at the .30% this year.
I'll have to get back with you. I have an answer for that.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I, yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
I think there's a number of things going on. I mean, we're dealing with a governmental body that has a statutory tax limitation on what they can levy across the equalized assessed value of the properties inside that district. And that is the .3. I believe they're at .27 right now, if I'm not mistaken. So we're not talking about, we're talking about fractional difference at this point in terms of where they're at. You know, the calls for service that take place predominantly and historically down in that district have been ambulance calls for service. There's been very limited, if any, fire calls for service. And if there were fire calls, oftentimes, they were open burning violations, which this agreement would put an end to with those taxpayers.
I believe in the five years, I don't have that brochure that I handed out a couple months ago, but I think there were nine structure fires in four years, five years. So.
Correct.
No, we do not respond down there for the actual structure fires. Often, it's 85, 90% EMS.
And then the ambulance calls for service are reimbursed either through Medicare or through insurance carriers, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Correct. So when you're looking at the mathematics behind all of the activity that happens down there, it's just not this .3, which is the outlier.
Right.
I mean, it is kind of a fixed guaranteed amount. But beyond that, we do get reimbursed for our ambulance calls for service.
Right, and this contract was more than just the three tenths of a percent. Historically, we've charged them a resident fee for ambulance services, which we've corrected, and they're going to now be charged the non-resident fee, which is an additional $275 per call. And then the enforcement of the burn ordinance as well.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron?
I just want to offer, I agree with Alderman Went, that I'd like to have it spelled out before we actually vote on it. And also, I would like to see some sort of explanation from them on what the $10,000 is for. I think we agree.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt you, like an itemized budget for what that is?
Yeah, and I'm not looking for exact pennies and nickels. But $10,000 seems an excessive amount to service that one little district down there in Brooklyn. I may be wrong, but I wonder if they're not totaling up what it costs for all of South Moline instead of just that fire district. But, so I'd like to move to table this until that could be further explained to us.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion by Alderson Waldron, seconded by Alderson Went. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Table that. I'll look forward to it coming back. So we move to 6.4. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an intergovernmental agreement with the Moline Cove Valley School District, number 40, establishing an administrative internship program. It's you, or Leah, or Barry.
I think Leah probably would take that. I mean, it's exciting news. It's good.
Sure. So we had such great success with the Public Works and Utilities internship that we thought it would be an interesting concept to explore, an administrative internship, to try and garner interest in careers in government for students on that side of things. So we worked with the school district and have for you tonight this IGA that we're looking for your approval on.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderson Meyer, seconded by Alderson O'Brien. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Informational, analysis of off-street parking regulations. Director Vito, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. All right. So I want to take a few minutes tonight to give a presentation on the white paper that was in y'all's packet. This is based on some direction that council gave to staff before my tenure here with the city. Back in December of 2021, council did direct staff to examine the parking regulations along the John Deere corridor. As we were analyzing that, we decided to take a full review of the city's parking regulations. We've heard some comments from some of our developers that had some concerns about it. And just with my professional recommendation, looking at our parking standards, there's some things that we want to look at. So I wrote this paper to kind of analyze a little bit about where we're at and some suggestions of maybe where to go. So real quick background here. So parking standards, as I think everyone's not really surprised about, have had a very large impact on how Moline has developed. We're a landlocked city. We've got neighbors, both sides of us, we have two rivers that border a majority of our city. So we don't have a ton of land, and we are mostly developed within those boundaries. Major changes in work and shopping habits over the last two decades have resulted in many underutilized parking areas. And what we are looking at here is we want to modernize our parking ordinance while still balancing the need for parking that we know we are gonna have. So kind of want to start here with the current state of parking in Moline. So our ordinance actually does outline what the purpose of our off-street parking and circulation standards are. And that is to alleviate and prevent congestion of public right of ways by establishing minimum requirements of off-street parking and circulation. Currently, we do require off-street parking for all development within the city, with the exception of development in the NC and the B2 zoning districts. Just to kind of give a little bit of an idea of the land use that we're talking about, each parking space requires about 270 square feet of land. And that is based on a 9-by-18 parking space and then looking at, again, about a 9-by-12 part of one way of a two-way aisle access. So you're looking at a minimum of 270 square feet. Oftentimes, it's a lot more. Parking requires, occupies a large portion of our city's developed area. Just within Moline Center, for example, 51 acres of our downtown is with off-street surface parking. It's, I've got a couple maps here that illustrate that even more. Looking, if you look at our big-box retailers, every single one of them, you are looking at where you have significantly more of the land is being taken up by parking than by the building itself. So again, a very, not a great use of our land. You look at the Walmart, it's about a 200,000-square-foot building, and you've got 363,000 square feet of that is, of their parcel is of parking. So you're looking at 187% of parking to building ratio. The Hy-Vee on the avenue, it's a smaller store, it's about 75,000 square feet. They have about just under 167,000 square feet of parking. The mall, this is not including Dillard's and Von Mar, is about 617,000 square feet, and you are at almost 1.5 million square feet of parking. So 240% of the mall area is parking compared to building. And even when you look at some of our smaller sites, like the Walgreens in Old Town, that's about a 14,000-square-foot building, and you have about just over 37,500 square feet of parking. So again, not a great use of our land. We looked a little bit at what the commercial corridors and the amount of surface parking. So again, within downtown, that area is about 248 acres. 51.3% of that, I'm sorry, 51.3 acres of that downtown area is off-street surface parking. Avenue of the Cities, 169 acres, again, 51.3. Kind of interesting, actually. It's the exact same amount. And then John Deere, that's 839.9 acres and just under 200 acres of parking. And remember that on John Deere, we have a lot of undeveloped out parcels still. The whole area of Menards, all of that, that's all, at some point, will be future. It would be additional parking. So here's just some maps real quick. So again, downtown, it would be the area that's outlined in the yellow. All that red, again, is downtown parking lots. Again, here's the John Deere corridor. As you can see, and what we looked at here was anything that was commercially zoned. So you, again, in the red is your surface parking, and then the yellow is the boundary. And again, we have a lot of outlots that haven't been developed along John Deere. So kind of looking at the last 20 years. So the city's parking ordinance was last updated in the early 2000s. We're not just speeding that private automobiles is still the primary means of transportation. I want to be very clear, we're not talking about, you know, getting rid of automobiles or anything like that. But the relationship with the private auto is changing with looking at things like ride share with Uber and Lyft, rising single-vehicle households. A lot of people of my age and younger millennials are, we only have one vehicle. A lot of people of my age and younger millennials are, we only have one vehicle. My spouse and I have only had one vehicle for most of our entire married life, and, and that's pretty common. And then autonomous vehicles, electric vehicles, there's just, we're seeing a huge change in how we think about automobiles in this country. Not to mention, you know, what we've come out of with the pandemic over the last few years, remote work. We all know, you know, the story behind offices, you know, that our office spaces, they're not being, going to be filled, and they probably won't be refilled as people continue to do remote working. Online retail, curbside pickup, again, all really has shifted what we look at and how we, you know, look at commercial parking. You know, the private auto is going to continue to be the common and most likely majority form of, of transportation. In any discussion that we talk about with parking, it does need to balance community values and expectations. You know, street parking is a huge, a huge concern, especially on the avenue of the cities. We don't require parking for most of our commercial areas on the avenues of cities, but we do hear from businesses, we do hear from neighbors that are concerned about where people are going to park. So, you know, this, there's going to be some balances we're going to have to talk about here. Affordability. Building parking is expensive. It's expensive for our developers. You're looking at between fifteen-hundred and three-thousand dollars per space. That doesn't include land. When you talk about land, you're looking at about five-to-ten-thousand dollars per, per parking space. Environmental sustainability, increased heat with the heat island effect, stormwater runoff that exacerbates flooding issues. It's also expensive for developers, again, we, you know, we, and expensive for the city. We try to offset some of those costs with some of our higher stormwater fees, but again, that gets put on, you know, the property owners. Our larger property owners, our Walmarts or things like that, they oftentimes can absorb those costs. But if you're talking about smaller businesses, that's, that's a big impact on their bottom line. So, you know, we definitely need to be cognizant of that. And then again, just economics. Land value, as I said, you know, I, I put in there, it's my favorite Roger's quote, you know, that, you know, the land, we're not making any, any more of it anymore. And so that's, you know, something we need to really, you know, be cognizant of, that there's, again, better uses of our land than just filling it up with parking that's going to be sitting empty most of the year. Planners, we like to call like the four weeks between Christmas and, or between Thanksgiving and Christmas, kind of the hundred-year parking event. You know, every, you know, commercial building is built out for that idea. But as you see on the front page of this, you know, one of our planning technicians, she went out on December nineteenth, six days before Christmas, out to Walmart. And you see a vast majority of that parking is empty. And that's what you see more and more. So, you know, it's just, just things we want to sort of think about. We looked at comparing Moline to other Quad City municipalities. Couple of things that stood out to us. First of all, we have many, many more land use categories than a lot of our, our neighbors, which complicates our ordinance, makes it, it, it's great to kind of refine it, but you have to kind of question, you know, what, what's a good number of, of land use categories? Similar to Moline, Rock Island, East Moline, and Davenport also have no parking requirements for the central business district. So, you know, we're, we're similar to our, our peers with that. One thing that actually really stood out to me is Rock Island has parking maximums, which I was surprised about. You really think of parking maximums in, you know, a lot of other cities, but Rock Island, they, they have a very effective parking maximum. It just says you can't have more than twenty percent over the parking minimum for, for the property. So nothing super convoluted, it's just a one, one-sentence, very single, you know, a single regulation that seems to work pretty well. Some things that also stood out to staff, Moline, we do require more residential parking than other communities. Great example, almost all of our residential units, we require three off-street parking spaces. That's a lot. That's actually kind of outside the norm. Most communities, it's two, and then once you start looking at apartments, things like that, you're looking at one and a half or even one parking space. So, you know, something to kind of consider about. A good thing, though, we do have less parking for many of our institutional uses. So, you know, so it's kind of some pluses and minuses here. One thing that we have heard from a lot of developers, and it actually surprised me, is our in-vehicle sales and service, so basically our drive-through uses. We require one space for every fifty square feet of the building. So a two-thousand-square-foot Starbucks, for example, requires forty parking spaces. You're not going to get forty people into a, a, a two-thousand-square-foot Starbucks. That's just not going to happen. And it's something we're hearing from developers of, are, are you sure? Is that really what you all require? There, there's, I think, better ways that we can handle that. And then finally, we have kind of what I'm calling uncommon standards and metric for parking calculations. Kind of odd ways that we calculate parking that kind of go against the grain of, of what's commonly accepted practices now. So kind of wrap up here, some items for potential study and then some next steps. You know, staff would recommend that we do look at our minimum parking requirements. I think there's some tweaking that can be done on that. Simplifying our use types, looking at our methods of calculations, and at least studying the idea of doing the parking maximums. So some next steps, staff's been working on this pretty, pretty consistently since last summer. We did have a, a plan commission presentation of this paper back in late February. Tonight is a council presentation. What we are kind of asking both bodies is to review this, provide any comments that you might have to staff, and then we will work with legal to draft some proposed amendments, and we hope to bring them to council. Go through plan commission and council sometime this summer. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
One, thank you. I know it's before your time, but it's like fifteen months ago, so I, I appreciate you guys bringing this because that picture of, of Walmart, you know, when we were kids, like.
Every space was full.
Every space was full, the mall and, and everything. And now it is just, I mean, we, we've spent all this money to, to get utilities to places, the roads and everything, and there could be infill in, in some of these areas if we reduce the, the requirements. So I applaud you, and, and I'm really looking forward to what you guys come in with proposed amendments. The, the one thing that I think might be a little bit unique when we, we talk about is, you know, the Avenue of the Cities and, and a couple of areas where we have commercial or office that is adjacent to residential, though that seems like maybe an opportunity for an overlay of, of something like that, where, you know, an office down on John Deere Road may have a completely different set of rules than if somebody is sticking something on, you know, up by Wharton. You know, where if, if you put all the parking for a commercial thing into that street behind it, that could be a recipe for disaster. So I am in favor because clearly we do not need the acres of, of parking that, that we're requiring, but that would be the one caveat that I'd like to see in the, in the proposals.
Thank you. I, I'll get to you, Mr. O'Brien. Is it safe to say, you know, we talk in other contexts about being business-friendly, and it's safe to say, it sounds to me like you're saying these, our outlier status in multiple categories is making us business unfriendly?
I, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Strong towns has a, this is one of the things they're very heavily focused on is parking. And they talk a lot about, you know, the fact that parking regulations, overburden some parking regulations have, especially in our small businesses. And so I, I do think this is not only a, a planning, a land use issue, but also an economic issue.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
There's a stormwater benefit, obviously, to someplace like South Park with, what is it? A hundred and two-hundred acres of parking where it was a wetland. There's a few of us that remember before South Park was there, and it was just a swamp, basically. You know, it was a farm, and then there's a bunch of swampland down there. So it's a wetland, basically, that that thing is built on. And I think it would be beneficial, did we talk to, I didn't see, did we talk to like Walmart and South Park and?
We, we, we haven't yet.
Okay.
But we are working with Utilities, Andy Parr, our environmental manager, about this. He kind of tal, talked to me a little bit about, like, for Walmart, for example, they, they end up paying about four-thousand dollars a quarter in stormwater fees. So it's, it's, it's quite a bit.
Yeah.
And so, and again, that, that, that amount is, is fair because the city has to treat all of that water. But yeah, I think if we had a conversation with them, and you even see Walmart is trying to find different ways to utilize in that space in the sea, in the spring and summer, they put grass seed and stuff like it out, that out there, because they don't need all that space. So, yeah, we, you know, we're going to continue talking with the mall, I think, with redevelopment, potential plans of the mall and things like that.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
It's all ripe for, you know, I think redevelopment and a better use than it sitting empty, you know, three-hundred-and-fifty days of the year.
Well, South Park particularly, that is, like you said, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to look at a total different use for that because that mall situation, you know, with Amazon and everything, that, that's not coming back. So that, that's another discussion for another meeting.
Thank you.
An entire meeting.
An entire meeting, which we will have.
Anything further from the council? Okay, hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vitas, seven point two, March Statist information report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before you have the March twenty twenty-three Statist Information Report, which, as you know, is an ongoing process. We started back in twenty twenty-two in January, and we continue to report on progress, not only strategic goals that were established in the twenty-two to twenty-four strategic plan, but also other items that, that come up in the routine course of business. If there are any questions about any of the projects, I'm always more than happy to address those with you face-to-face, one-on-one, or here this evening, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anything from the council? Mr. Went?
Yeah, I, I know we had talked about, in February, we were going to get the residential licensing for rentals. We missed that, and now we're into March, and we've had a recent departure, and it's in here.
Where are we at?
Is this something I'm going to see before I, I leave?
You, you will see that there are many things on this agenda that, that came up that you would like to see before that day arrives, and, and this, that is one of them. You know, we, we have taken that project very, very seriously. In fact, it's, it's reached a different level. It's more than just the rental housing, it's just housing in the city and how to address all of the housing issues that we're confronted with, whether it is single-family residential, multifamily residential inspections, whether it's the crime-free housing, whether it's the Airbnbs or the VRBOs, you know, whether it's the abandoned properties, whether it's the vacant properties. We're bringing that back to council at the roundtable. And we're going to share with you everything that, that we have gathered up until now related to housing. And I, and I will just suffice it to say, you know, we're going to be looking at establishing an overall or a comprehensive housing program for the city that incorporates not only all of those elements, but then also looks at the other linkages that need to be looked at, connectivity, for example, with the land bank as well as with MCDC. It's a complex issue, but it's one that needs to be addressed with a comprehensive or transformative solution. Otherwise, we're just, we're, we're just picking away at it. We're not really addressing the main root of the problem. So we're going to present that to you next week, and then it's going to continue beyond that.
So you, you, you're speaking by language, all those are the arrows in the quiver that I've worked on for the last.
Every arrow you got.
But is next week a roundtable on that? I've got, the last one that I thought was sent out was that we're doing right-of-way in Chapter Six, or is that?
That we want to.
I mean, this has been changed.
We want to move this ahead. We want to move this ahead because it's more, more critical.
Terrific, I just didn't know is, so this is not the most up-to-date calendar? Next week, we're doing?
You haven't seen it.
I haven't got confirmation yet, but if I'm getting confirmation, I will send that out tomorrow.
Okay.
No, I do want to move this up because I think it's that serious of an issue. And we did have some really enlightening conversations when Mayor Murphy, the former mayor of Pittsburgh, was here. They had significant, again, a mill city, a mill town up and down the Ohio. They had similar problems. He had some really great tidbits of knowledge and experience that he laid out when we were talking about housing because he had taken a tour around the city. And he shared some great ideas, which I want to share with council and, and explore because I think that if we're going to address housing as a program, it needs to have all the arrows in the quiver, as you said. You know, it's kind of like we have all these spokes in the wheel, but we're missing that hub, and we need to put the hub there and then be able to spin the wheel effectively. And I think that's what I want to bring forward next week with, with Drake and with Barry and, and other members of the team.
Mr. Went?
That's, that is terrific and, and great, but then I guess it begs, the next question I had on my list, we've been going through this Chapter Six, you know, secondary poles and, and all of that stuff. And, and I know that you had asked me, I provided a list of, I don't know, probably sixteen or seventeen that I had just driven by on my way to, to council back in November. Might have been in October. Well, I drove that route again tonight, and I think only maybe two have been removed out, out of that list of eighteen or, or so. And so I, it, it, I thought that that was maybe what we were going to be talking about next week. So is, is that going to be addressed at, at any time? Because we were assured, oh, that, that this is governed by other federal laws and, and everything. So they have to do it, but it's been now four or five months, and they're not doing it. And so what's our plan, or when will we be discussing that, or what's the?
I think.
I just think things are getting pushed off and, and falling through the cracks.
Yeah, I mean, we're not letting anything fall through the cracks proverbially, and we just have a lot of cracks to jump over. I mean, there's a lot. And, and Chapter Six has not been left off that list. We definitely know that that has to be addressed. You know, I know David has been working with the, with the folks from Mid-America who own most of the poles in the city. And there's a whole plan of action on how those get removed. And, you know, when there's attachments on them, and those attachments have to be moved, they have to wait very specifically for the attachee to move and relocate their, their lines, and then poles can be removed. So I'm going to defer that, I'm going to refer that to David.
So the point here is that the administrator has to make a timeline, an updated timeline of roundtable topics based on the amount of things that have to get done. So that'll be coming to you soon. Thank you.
We'll get it here before.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, is there any further public comment, chief, this evening? Okay, I'll call the regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. William, nope.
If you would bow your heads, please.
Mr. Williams?
Lord, we pray that we be endowed with wisdom, that we find faith with God and our neighbors while being grounded in integrity, honesty, wisdom, and grace. That we keep the word of God as our protective shield and be guarded against the lies, deceit, and envy of fallen men. We ask all this in Jesus's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Call, please.
Alderson Williams.
Present.
Masias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moier.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole minutes of February twenty-first, council minutes of February fourteenth and twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and appointments made during committee as well this evening, March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Resolutions. Council Bill ten thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Sutton Corporation of Dublin, Ohio for the purchase of a custom chassis S-nine fire pumper utilizing Sourcewell Contract Number zero-two-two-eight-one-eight SUT in the amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Council Bill ten forty dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a purchase agreement with Legacy Fire Apparatus of Shorewood, Illinois for the purchase of one custom Fouts Brothers Fouts Four Initial Attack Vehicle utilizing NPP Gov Contract Number PS-two-zero-two-two-five for the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-three cents. Council Bill ten forty-one dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the approval of a request for a streetlight in the one-thousand block of Twenty-Fourth Street for an amount of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Council Bill ten forty-two dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a joint funding agreement for state-led construction work and a resolution for improvement authorizing motor fuel tax funds be used for the city's local match for Project nineteen zero-zero-two-six-nine-zero-zero-R-S, Seventh Street resurfacing from Twelfth to Sixteenth Avenue for the amount of eighty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Council Bill ten forty-three dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a joint funding agreement for state-led construction work and resolution for improvement authorizing motor fuel tax funds be used for the city's local match for Project nineteen zero-zero-two-seven-zero-zero-R-S, Avenue of the Cities overlay from Thirty-Fourth to Forty-First Street for the amount of one-hundred-and-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Council Bill ten forty-four dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to addendum number one to the lease agreement between the city of Moline and Moline Little League and consent to allow the sales of advertising and sponsorship opportunities in the form of signage to commercial supporters seeking promotional opportunities at the Riverside Complex. You have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second?
All right, motion by other person Went, seconded by other person Waldron. All right. Motion by Alderperson Went, seconded by Alderperson Waldron. Roll call, please. O'Brien was first. I thought it was almost. All right. All right, seconded by Alderperson O'Brien.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill three thousand six dash two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance amending Chapter thirty-five zoning and land development, Article One, Division Two, Section thirty-five dash twelve oh three definitions. Now, the Moline Code of Ordinances by revising certain definitions relating to nonconformities, amending Article Three, Division One, entitled "In General", dealing with the same sector matter, and Article Five, Division Three, entitled "Illumination Standards for Internal Consistency."
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Timian, seconded by Alderperson Went. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Went.
We we had this conversation, I guess maybe for clarification for everybody here. Do you want to go over the changes that were done since the last time we reviewed it and our discussion regarding illumination and? We have to. Yes, so before you is the revised ordinance based on what you all gave us to work with last time. It clarifies separating out for the lighting, it talks about, again, it's the twenty-five, the twenty-five to seventy-five and seventy-five-plus breakdown. Also does clarify that just because you might necessarily be touching the parking lot, that you may not have to do, you may not have to do lighting. And then Alderman, Alderperson Went and I were speaking before the meeting, he had a concern about if somebody, he gave the example, the big lots, for example, if they were remodeling. Right now, they have one single pole in there. It actually does state in the ordinance that even if they are doing a remodeling, that they would have to come into compliance with with it. I did find that it's kind of hidden in there. I'll give you the example here real quick, just so you know. It would be under thirty-five, fifty-three, oh-three, one, I'm sorry, number four renovations. When the cost of renovation, the principal structure reaches the thresholds described in Section thirty-five dash thirty-one, twelve, C-three, all existing lighting shall be brought into compliance to the extent required in said section. So that should address the concern. And that was similar concern that Plan Commission had as well, so.
Thank you. Right. Hearing nothing further. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Resolutions. Council Bill ten forty-five dash two thousand twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an agreement with Kevin Evans and Associates to administer small business development services for the Business Owner Occupied Stabilization Transformation Boost Program beginning March eighth, two thousand twenty-three, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Timian, seconded by Alderperson Macias. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Went.
So I I appreciate, because I think one of the conversations we had when we were talking about the boost program was there was some indication that we were gonna maybe just use kind of score and do this in-house. I'm glad that we went out and tried to find a professional to 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 do this. I've got a couple of questions or concerns on this and I'm trying to pull up a the the thing itself. It just closed down on me, so sorry about that. But I I guess the first one is there is a a right within this for a thirty-day cancellation by either side. I appreciate us if it's not working out with with them, cutting our losses and 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 canceling it. My concern is we're starting this boost program. We're got people in the application process. We're moving down the road. We've given them twenty thousand dollars upfront. They're paying it. This becomes tough or more work than they maybe had anticipated. And so they give us a thirty-day cancellation and now we're kind of stuck holding the bag, trying to get this con this money put out, administered and and everything. How would that work if they or what's our intent if if something like that happens?
Ms. Woodley or Mr. Vito?
Good evening. I appreciate the question. Yeah, his initial payment is twenty thousand dollars. Kevin Evans just finished the Rise Up Grant in Peoria. Basically, it's the boost grant, just a different name. So we have a lot of the materials to move forward. After the twenty thousand dollars, he would get an initial payment. I believe Kevin's very committed. We spent a half a day with him yesterday. He driving around the impact areas, talking about the application before we release it. We put the registration online about ten days ago and we have a hundred and forty-seven people registered already to take the classes. And so that's six classes for this year. He's committed to six classes next year as well. Even if there's no money, it continues on with our small development program that we wanna get moving here in Moline. So I think there's a commitment for him, from him. Legal wrote the a grant for me, not the grant, I'm sorry, the the document for me. I don't know, Margaret, if you wanna chime in on that. I think it was Mark who wrote it. Is there is there a clause for us to get back any of the initial payment?
Well, we have our usual, you know, way to enforce the agreement. If they have not performed the services equaling that amount, we can later recoup that.
But but my question was, they've got an alto an absolute right with thirty-day notice that they can just quit it.
Right.
And and I guess I've got concerns with that. If we've got this much interest and all of these people kind of signed up and were going through this process, I I appreciate that they've done this and are committed to it. Again, as an attorney, if they're committed to it, then what's the problem with putting it in writing that they're obligated to continue to to provide that service and not give them a a thirty-day out?
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
That's pretty standard contract language for any consulting business. I wouldn't enter into a contract without that exact language. But I also wouldn't stay in business as an ad agency if I were running around violating that all the time. There is a risk. We would recoup our costs, I mean, to be sure, but I don't think that is a risk that is unique to this situation. It would apply to any similar program and any contractor we want to have would demand that own protection for their own business. Because sometimes you get in a situation where client becomes not worth it and I would never give away my my right to walk away in that circumstance.
Thank you. Ms. Kostakos?
So again, you are right, Alderperson Schmidt. It's very standard language. And if we are at that point where the relationship is just not working, do we even want to force them to continue providing service? No, generally not.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Went?
I I've got I've got a couple other little things, but while I'm reading through this, could you read through the indemnification on? As I was reading through it, it seems a little janky. I'm not really sure. It talks about that it has to deal with bodily injury, sickness, disease, death, injury, destruction of property, or and then it gets in, starts talking about misuse of trademark and copyright, but doesn't really kind of talk about miss use of funds or misappropriations of fund. I mean, and and so to Alderman Schmidt's point, I I don't disagree with you. But this is a little bit of a different animal. This is like one point one million dollars of the taxpayers' money that is going out the door that they are going to be administering. And I I I hear what you're saying, but it it it's it's a concern that I want to make sure that we're protected and and that's 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 taken care of. The 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 other issue here is it it talks about, yeah, we all know that, you know, administrative fees typically are five percent. A lot of federal grants and everything will allow you to do five percent, maybe up to ten percent of administrative fees. And this hovers just shy of that that ten percent mark. But there is a provision in it that in addition to that, while they are estimating, I think it's maybe about twenty-five hundred dollars worth of reimbursables, there's no cap to whatever that reimbursables might be. I I I don't know if there was a conversation of it. I I would like to see something where there's a cap of maybe five thousand dollars. I mean, that's almost double of what they're anticipating, but that would make sure and ensure that this thing doesn't rise above that ten percent of the administrative fees. Was that anything that was discussed or?
Yes, and the way I understood that, our discussion, that's the max that they will receive is the three thousand, the three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. The contract itself is ninety-nine thousand. So forty-nine thousand, five hundred for each year.
Well, so if that's the case, then we should have language in the reimbursable section that it says that it's capped at, what'd you say, three thousand?
Yeah, uh, three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six.
So I'll make a motion to say that the reimbursables are capped at that amount in the contract.
Second.
Just to be clear, as I mentioned Thursday, capped at that amount, motion to cap at three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Went, seconded by Alderperson Waldron. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
And I believe, KJ just said this, but that is that is already the understood amount. We're just adding that into another place in the contract language.
Correct. So the contract will still be for that hundred and two, three fifty-six. We did receive two bids. The other bid that came in on this project was a hundred and fifty thousand and some change. So quite a big difference there.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this cap language? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Went, did you have anything further? I saw a hand up previously. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, only I I think reiterating the point made by council on the issue of a thirty-day out to any contractor, putting us in a situation where we're relying on contract language to force someone to keep working for the city, isn't just asking for someone to do bad work and to that is a great way to misspend public funds.
But what we would keep the thirty-day.
Yes, Mr. Went.
The idea is we would keep our thirty-day. They would not be able.
And requiring someone to stay in a contract beyond the typical standard time of when they could get out of it would be a good way of getting bad work and that is a waste of taxpayer funds.
Thank you. We we have to limit our comments. We're on, this is regular council meeting. So if it's something new, I can call in.
It is something.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you. And just for parliamentary procedure, if in the future you feel that my comments are out of order, that would be the time to to interrupt, but not beforehand, but.
I have to acknowledge everyone on the floor and when people are interrupting one another, that's my job to make sure people know that they have to be acknowledged. Continue, please.
So within the the qualifications and the recommendations on here, it says on page three of the proposal, it says a higher priority would be to find worthy projects at the maximum eighty thousand or twelve awards. It talks about the ten thousand dollar awards, up to eighty thousand, depending on the the thing. Is our intent that we are going to emphasize and the highest priority is only for the eighty thousand? Or because that, well, it was my understanding that the the program would go up to eighty thousand in the event that they met all the criteria and and all those different things, that we are also hoping to help as many different businesses and improve and expand as many businesses in Moline as possible. That language within here was a little bit against what I thought our kind of policy was, that it wasn't a higher priority just for the eighty thousand, but that we would give equal priority to all applicants.
We will give equal priority. We did, like I said, we we spent a half a day with the consultant yesterday, driving around town and kind of clarifying some of the things that he wrote in his proposal to us so there would not be any future misunderstandings. One thing to keep in mind when grants are awarded, these, or I should say, forgivable loans are awarded, it's a committee. And so he will sit on that committee, but also will be Barry, Ryan, myself, and Tara, and then one person from the revolving loan. So it's not the consultant spending that one million dollars. It's that committee making that final decision before those contracts are signed.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Went?
But just for clarity, but they're putting together like the the application or assisting in that that process. I just want to make sure that it's not being put together in such a way that it skews things to just having twelve awards rather than.
No, we anticipate anywhere from fifteen to thirty awards under the money. Because not everyone's gonna receive the max. Their business plan is not gonna support that. So we anticipate anywhere from fifteen to thirty awards under the one point mil one point one million dollars. And like I said, the first class is scheduled for March eighteenth.
Thank you. Mr. Vito?
Alderperson Went, I also just wanted to state that as part of the review process, we are gonna be asking for financials and also a clear plan of what they're planning to spend the money on. So there will be some discretionary discretion in that, similar to what we did with the the childcare, where we had people who would ask for the max and and we very often would give them less than that based on what their, you know, what their actual business plan showed. So there will, you know, we're not, we we plan on on being fair, giving people what they they request if it's reasonable, but then also trying to stretch this money as far as possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Went?
And then the last question, I I don't know if you had a chance to look over the indemnification. You feel comfortable with it?
So I think you, maybe I could direct your attention to, of course, I've lost that now, in that paragraph number eight, I think you were concerned that there was not a general statement of indemnity.
Well, ju-just the way that it was had been written and what its focus was. I mean, if you feel comfortable that it's fine, that's that's terrific, but.
So as I was saying, if you look at the, from the bottom of that paragraph, of course, my eyes say this so bad. It's I'm sorry. So there is reference to indemnification by the firm for just general breach of the agreement or any duties described in the agreement.
Okay.
Is that what you're worried about?
Yeah, if if you feel comfortable with the language, that's that's fine by me.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. Roll call, please, on this amended motion.
Alderperson Williams?
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Bill ten forty-six dash two thousand twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Emery Construction and Corporate Group Incorporated for Project Number fourteen-twenty, two thousand twenty-three sidewalk program in the amount of six hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Timian, seconded by Alderperson Went. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Waldron.
At one time here, we used to have a fifty-fifty program for sidewalks. Resident would pay fifty, we pay fifty. Didn't work out so well. We went to a seventy-five, twenty-five. Do we have any sort of program like that anymore? Are the homeowners contributing any money anymore?
I can answer that as someone who's paid twenty-five percent just two years ago.
And the reason I ask that, in the explanation, there's no offsetting revenue coming from homeowners in there in the explanation. So that's why I've asked.
Mr. Dryer, would you come to the microphone?
I'd have to to check in on it. I can't, I don't really have a good answer for you right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It'd be nice to know if we're still getting money out of people. It'd be nice to know if we're still getting money out of people, like, Mr. Timian.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Went?
Yeah, it was my understanding that if you paid, you moved to the top of the list, right, so, but I think that, 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 that program may be...
If I remember right.
It was a, I think it might be a different line item in the budget for...
Well, this calls out specific four, four or five specific projects, but it includes the contract for all the sidewalks in town, so at that point, there should be some offsetting revenue based on the contribution.
I'm, I'm gonna ask if we have a follow-up on that for data collec, information collection.
It's not gonna stop, it's not gonna stop my vote, it just seems like it's missing.
Thank you.
Just send out an email, the explanation, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Elder Person Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays? That motion passes. Council bill ten forty-seven dash twenty-two-three, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase an electric riding auto scrubber from Great Western Supply Company in Davenport, Iowa, for the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person O'Brien, seconded by Elder Person Timian. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Williams? Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays, and that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Council bill thirty oh seven dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance amending chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time, but amending the following locations, removing Twelfth Avenue on both sides between Nineteenth Street and Thirty-first Street, removing Twelfth Avenue on both sides from Thirty-third Street to a distance of one hundred feet east of Thirty-fourth Street, removing Twelfth Avenue on both sides from Thirty-sixth Street Court to the East Moline border, and adding Twelfth Avenue on both sides between Nineteenth Street and the East Moline border.
Move to approve?
Motion by Elder Pers, oh, well, this is first reading ordinances.
No, you're right, apologies, Your Honor.
Council bill thirty oh eight dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance approving a special use permit for cannabis dispensary Bolden Investments One LLC, forty-three oh one, fourth, Forty-fourth Avenue, John Deere Road Corridor. Council bill thirty oh nine dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four, personnel of the Moline, Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four, thirty-two oh seven, appendix one, by adding a job description for accounting manager. Council bill thirty ten dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four, personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four dash thirty-two oh seven, appendix one, by adding a job description for management analyst grant coordinator. Council bill thirty eleven dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated therein as section thirty-five, thirty-one oh three, for nine eighteen and nine twenty-two, Fourth Avenue. Council bill thirty twelve dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding electric vehicle supply equipment, including amendments to article one, division two, section thirty-five dash twelve oh three definitions, article three, division four, section thirty-five dash thirty-four oh one, regulation of allowed uses, table thirty-five dash thirty-four one point one, permitted land uses, section thirty-five dash thirty-four oh eight, principal commercial land uses, section thirty-five dash thirty-four eleven, accessory residential land uses, section thirty-five dash thirty-four fourteen, accessory commercial uses, and article five, division one, section thirty-five dash fifty-one hundred, off-street parking and traffic circulation standards. That is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. So if there's nothing further, we move to miscellaneous business. There, I've got a couple, um, bits of information. There is, as Mr. Vitas said, quite a lot going on, um, the beginning of the year, enacting, you know, getting things on the strategic plan, um, completed. Well, one of the things I know we're all interested in is finding dollars from other sources, and so, um, we are chasing federal dollars this year, and, and their deadlines, we've got notices from our Senator Duckworth and Representative Sorensen related to some of, um, our strategic plan ideas, so we're, the staff is working quite hard this week to try to meet some of those deadlines, because that, those are dollars we have not historically applied for, and we really need to start doing that. I wanted to report that MCDC, I believe, is getting very well organized. There was a good meeting on Wednesday this last week, um, and, uh, one of the things I found most interesting that you should know about is the way Janelle Chouagnier is, is pointing the direction for the conversations about what MCDC is doing, right? How they're enacting their strategic plan, but also how it meshes well with, um, our CED work and, um, and where we're headed with housing, et cetera, and those discussions. So I plan to share this with, um, with Administrator Vitas, uh, as you prepare for that, that roundtable, but you're all willing, uh, welcome to take a look at how she's laid out a continuum of, this is what we do at MCDC, and the, here's how we could be moving away from that mission or closer to the mission, um, with a variety of options. So I've, I've reminded MCDC, right? Let's not duplicate services, right? Let's streamline, be efficient, be, be well coordinated with the city, um, and continue to reach residents where they're at with needs, um, with their homes and, and upkeep. So I just wanted to let you know that that work seems to be going well at MCDC. I also wanted to let you know that we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with two, uh, three AM liquor license holders. We're at the recommendation of the police department, um, we're looking at a conversation about moving to two AM. We recognize that this can be a significant, um, change for businesses, so I wanna have a conversation with them ahead of bringing any, um, update to that, um, ordinance to the council, um, but there, but, but given that we want to make sure our downtown is a safe and welcoming place, and we're increasing residential, particularly, we really need to make sure we have, um, a safe downtown. So, uh, I believe, is it, has Rock Island already moved to two AM? I can't quite remember, but...
And then, of course, the Iowa side.
There's, there's a bit of coordination in terms of not having us be an outlier and, and asking for problems by being the only ones open until three AM. So I just wanted you to know there's a conversation that will take place, I, I think we're scheduling it for next week. And then I did, you brought it up earlier, um, Mr. O'Brien, I did wanna let everybody know that the, the Mesa Rich folks are in regular conversations with, um, Ryan and, um, Mr. Vitas, uh, working through ideas, seeing where things can go for the mall, and when people ask, that's what I always say, and I'm very glad that there's a regularity to that discussion, so that's the latest on that. And then finally, I think, community-wise, I'm celebrating Moline's win, right? Heading to state, I think some of you may have been down there in, um, Bloomington, and, um, unfortunately, I'm not able to go, but I love listening on the QC Sportsnet, and I just thought, like we do when the Cubs win, you wear, you wear, you wear their clothes to celebrate the next day. So anyway, I went maroon tonight, and that is all I have. Mr. Williams?
I would echo that, you know, a few things unite the community, uh, although when our sports teams do well, and it was great to see thousands pack into Wharton Fieldhouse last Friday, it kinda brought back, uh, taste of the old days, and it was, uh, good to see, and, uh, on this, well, we're at state now, so hopefully we can, our boys can win it up, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Messias?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Went?
Um, yeah, it was great to see Wharton Field, and, and, you know, back in the day, it used to be smoky, so the whole, uh, was a little rough, but, uh, was down in, um, uh, Bloomington Normal for the thing, and we probably had seventy-five percent of the bowl, uh, was, uh, was Moline. We, we wound up sitting actually right behind the bench, behind Coach Taylor, and my son and his friends are learned more about basketball, I think, from, uh, Coach Taylor, when he's coaching, is a very different man than when he is, uh, just out in the community, is the, he, they did a great job, and it was, it was terrific. So four fifteen on, uh, Friday, uh, is the date, so, um, looking forward to that. This I did wanna send around, um, when we talked about the, uh, Twelfth Avenue, um, reconfiguration, I'd made a motion, uh, and had thrown out some numbers on what that cross-section would look like. This is what it, and it didn't get a second, uh, but, uh, wanted to send this around just so you kinda actually see what that cross-section would, because sometimes just numbers may be a little difficult. The final vote's not till the twenty-first, but I thought I'd put this, uh, um, in your brain to percolate and, and, and think about. The last thing was, um, and, and I'm trying to understand it, and I, I brought this up a couple of times, and talked with a couple of other aldermen, we, there's a number of things that are now kind of bypassing cow, showing up for, uh, on the council agenda that we maybe hadn't discussed, uh, on the cow, or, um, uh, were, are just up for final vote, or being done, uh, both in the same night, or, or those sorts of things. Do we have kind of a written policy, so I can understand, 'cause when I ask, it, it seems to be, uh, issue-specific on when we decide, uh, what things are going to get passed through in one night without any previous discussion? Because it had always, again, historically, had, had always been, it was on the cow, was the opportunity to have the discussion, uh, then if it was gonna be on the final vote, it'd be the next time, so the community could have a chance to find out about it, the paper would then be able to write a, an article about it, or, or those sorts of things, so we could get input. The, the concern is with everything just happening all in one night, it's done, and then we find out feedback the next day or something like that, it's too late at that point. So do we have a policy, or is this just kind of an ad hoc when...
Right now, as far as I understand it, well, number one, um, practices are allowed to evolve based on, um, whatever the guidelines are, um, for meetings and procedure. I do know, I anticipated a question about this, about eighteen point six, and I double-checked, you know, the, there was a discussion in an informational about the EV ordinance, and that was why, um, I believe that the decision was to put it on this. And from what I remember from discussions with the clerk and, uh, city administrator about these issues, you are all free to pull something, either pull it to the cow, pull it, pull it for further discussion, uh, uh, on any of these items, not just the consent agenda. So trying to create an opportunity to continue to talk while we move things through, um, but it, but we've had a practice, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Kostopoulos, of if we've discussed something in a cow or an informational on the cow, and it's, um, in this case, with this eighteen point six, it was vetted by the plane commission, um, then it, it's, it's because there are two readings, and now, you know, we're pretty consistently two weeks apart in those readings versus one week, um, that this procedure would be okay. I hear your point.
Yeah. And, and I don't disagree that things can evolve, but, you know, this is a strong council form of government, that seems like a policy change, and if that's what this council wants to do, to, to expedite things and make them move faster and, and put situations where, and, and I guess I wasn't even aware, 'cause I've never seen anybody pull some but, something from the agenda for a final vote back to the cow, I, I, I don't know if there's a provision or thing...
No, I, no, not that, but I'm, I'm...
That's what you've said, and so, that's why I'm trying to just understand what...
No, you can, you, especially, you know, writing ahead of time is, is helpful, to know what you're, what's on.
So I think what you meant was pull it, um, for, for their discussion...
Discussion, yes.
At council, not at cow.
That's what, that's...
Thank you for clarifying.
Um, now, I, and I agree that we've sort of evolved, so that our goal is that there is discussion on, on topics, either a cow, or if it's been vetted at plane commission, that would take the place of, uh, a cow conversation, um, and then at cow, it might be either an informational or, um, an agenda item. So to the extent that you might be saying there seems to be no rhyme or reason, our goal is, and, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, to have it before you, or, or vetted at least three times, so, an informational or an agenda item at cow, or discussion at plane commission, or, you know, maybe border fair and police commission, and then two readings at council. So that could look different depending on what the item is.
Well, and I understand for, but that doesn't work for resolutions. Resolutions are done that night and, and, and over, and so this idea that it's gonna be done three times, I mean, I hate to go back to it, but the MetroNet is... The MetroNet's a great example of something that was put through both things in the same night and then passed, and certainly was not considered or vetted in, in advance, because it wasn't even published with the agenda. So I, I, I guess I'm, I'm still trying to understand, like, this boost thing, I know we had talked about boosts, but as far as sending out like, uh, um, uh, an RFP, doing a consideration on what that, uh, what we're, we're gonna be choosing, what that, uh, agreement with that outside consultant was gonna look like, that is, I certainly was not considered three different times, or, and, and I'm not saying it has to be three different times, for something like that, again, cow, break, a conversation, and then on the council, that seemed to be a, a good way to do it. I, I just have some concerns that we are speeding things along in a fashion that, uh, is, um, making it more difficult for our residents, uh, to provide input to, and, um, and again, if that's a policy decision that this council decides that they want to do, I think that that may be something that we should talk about, I would not support it, but for it to just be do, being done administratively without our input, I've got some real problems.
Well, we can certainly go back to, especially the resolution question, um, because it's not required in the same way to have the multiple readings that ordinance updates are. We'll, we'll continue to talk about that and see if we can, um, continue to balance the work that has to get done with the process, um, that we're using. Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I also wanna echo congratulations to the, uh, the high school team. Seeing Wharton that fall reminded me of, uh, Quad City Thunder and Crazy George, and I would just petition that he could come back as a mascot.
Thank you.
That is all, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer?
Yeah, thank God for the radio, right? That's great.
Yes.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought the, that up, 'cause I had a similar issue with this bike path issue and the, you know, the Twelfth Avenue issue, because I had a lot of calls from constituents on this, and I asked for, it was just an informational, but I kinda wanted to be here for it.
It, it wasn't an informational, it was on the cow agenda item, and you cannot pull something but just because you're absent. It, that, we've covered this already, Mr. O'Brien.
And aldermen cannot, so who could pull it from the agenda?
Well, be, well, the mayor can, as the, you know, she is...
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, for sure. And staff can pull it, right?
Well, no.
No, staff does not pull items from the agenda, staff places items on the agenda.
We've had multiple times where staff has pulled the agenda.
Yeah, I think we have.
If it's not ready, yeah, that's not...
So basically, just the alderman can't pull anything from the agenda, if they wanna be here. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Mr. Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas or Mr. Daikez?
Um, just quickly, uh, call to silence is in effect, as you know, I notified everybody on, uh, on Friday at about quarter to twelve, right as the applications came in. The citing application is going online on the city's webpage, it will have a very specific link, and all things related to the project will be linked to that page going forward, so that is up, it's running, uh, those around us are aware of it, uh, in the other communities. We did have a meeting today with all the administrators from Scott County, as well as from, uh, Rock Island County, just to, uh, answer questions and try to bring the temperature down, that seemed to go up with these folks, uh, because of a lot of misinformation. It was a jovial meeting, actually, and we actually had a great discussion. So just bringing that to your attention, if you do want a copy of the document, there are, uh, flash... If you do want a copy of the document, there are flash drives that can provide to anybody after this meeting if you'd like to have your own for your own computer. It's about a five hundred and twenty-five page document. So it takes up a lot of space, just so you're aware of it, but you're more than welcome to have those for your own personal use. The other thing I was going to mention is that our special events committee has kind of tied into what they are going to call the celebration at the end of August, the annual music event and arts festival. So the name that the committee has come up with is called Mo Live, Mo Music, Mo Art. So just sharing that with you. That's what they approved, and they're all excited. There was probably a hundred and fifty different people who submitted ideas for the name locally. And that was the name, that kind of a combination of several of them. So that's what they came up with, Mo Live, Mo Music, Mo Art.
Thank you.
I have a question for Bob. Bob referenced the cone of silence on the LRS project. How are we going to adjudicate that, so to speak, at Rickema? Where it's still a topic of discussion, and the next meeting is next week at one o'clock.
Meaning your participation?
Correct.
You can't participate in that, correct?
You won't be able to participate. I've advised the folks this morning, I need a governmental call as well with the mayors and administrators, as well as with by state. This council and its mayor are just, you know, off limits.
And that's what I assumed?
Yeah.
So we are going to need to have a representative there for us?
We will, and a representative will probably be.
You're in a missed your last meeting, Mr. Waldron.
No, no, no. The person that has been filling in for me may not be able to make it.
Will not be able to make it, so Barry Dykazin will be there.
Just kind of alluded to that someone, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment, Chief? Nope. Okay, thank you. We move to executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS one twenty slash two C one, and collective negotiating matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two C two.
Second.
Motion by other person, Williams, seconded by other person, Went. Roll call, please. Other person, Williams.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. Thank you. We move to executive session.